underway and we'll take a roll call of the members that are here. I'll go with the order that I see, so. Looks like you're gonna say.
Nathan.
Yep.
Nathan, it would be the the planning board meeting for.
Oh, yes, the planning board meeting for February 15th. We'll call that to order and take a roll call. Kristin.
Here.
Linda.
Here.
Andrew.
Here.
Kate.
Here.
I do not see Haley. She not. She's not here.
Haley and Burton will not be here.
Not here, okay, and I'm Nathan and I am here, so. All right, so the first thing we have on tonight's agenda. Looks like a recommendation to the select board for notice of intent to transfer a real property. 754 Monument Street.
So what I'm gonna try and bring up. We'll try and bring up the map. What is real property?
Real estate.
What is real property? Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the question.
It just means real estate.
Okay, thank you. No, it's listed in the letter as real property. I didn't know if there was some qualifier to that. Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, so this is what I can tell you. Between 1989 and 1995, Hutchins Farm worked with the town and the state to place six agricultural preservation restrictions over 67 acres at Hutchins Farm. Six APRs were created over time so that $900,000 in town funds could be spaced out over time. The state contributed $355,000. One of the boundary lines erroneously included a residential shed within the APR boundary, which is not a permitted use of APR land. In order to correct the delineation, parcel double A, which is approximately 3,534 square feet, will be transferred out of the APR and parcel BB, which is 3,956 square feet, will be transferred into the APR. Because parcel double A is currently subject to chapter 61A, the select board must waive its right of first refusal to acquire the parcel, considering recommendations from the Board of Assessors, Natural Resources Commission, and the Planning Board. This land swap is solely to correct a prior boundary mistake and is part of the Hutchins Farm landscape. And. Trying, I don't know how big. It's. This little triangle right here. And this is the shed. So there's, there's really no purpose for the town to acquire it and. I would move that the planning board recommend to the Board of Selectment that they not exercise their first right of refusal or transfer for that parcel of the Hutchins Farm.
I, I can make that motion. I, I mean, does anybody have questions?
So just to be clear, we, the sort of pizza slice swap that is shown there, we're suggesting that they, the town not. Not do this, not take it?
No, because the property is within a chapter 61A tax status. To take it out of 61A, the town has the first right of refusal. To purchase the property and so. There, there's no purpose for the town to acquire this little triangle of land. So they are just going to swap this portion, which is currently not in chapter land, with this portion.
Yeah, okay, I understand now. Got it.
So do we want to refuse the first right of refusal?
So my, my recommendation would be to, yes, have the planning board recommend to the select board that they not exercise their right of first refusal.
Sorry, I just had one question. I'm just, I just want to be clear that the error here wasn't in how the survey is done. It was the inclusion of that, that one shed that shouldn't have been part of it, right? Like, there wasn't, there wasn't an actual error in, in the, the survey itself. It was just in, in the inclusion of how, where they, where they measured, where they should have measured from. Right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm totally fine with the.
So there's, there's no. Yeah, there's no error within the survey boundaries. The error was just this inclusion of this area that has a residential shed.
Great.
Kristin, did you still want to make that motion?
Yeah, I, I move that the planning board recommend that the select board do, does not exercise the right of her first refusal for that parcel, part of the parcel.
And I'll second that.
All right, and let's take a vote. Kristin?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And myself, a yes. Nathan, this is a yes. So I think that's a unanimous, that is a unanimous vote for that. All right, on to the next thing. We have the 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles and preparation for the March 8 public hearing. I think we have Elizabeth sent around. Oh, this is for the FAQ.
Yep, so I. Did get edits from Linda. Linda, I don't know if you want to run through your presentation real quick. Since it wasn't done last time. Oh, you're muted.
As if, if people would like me to, I'm happy to run through it.
Sure, let me all share, I'll share my screen.
So is this without? With, okay, we'll see which for.
This is the version you just, you just sent me. I think it was yesterday.
Okay.
And so it just goes through the purpose of the bylaw and the warrant article. Okay. And then starts with the description of the formula business. And then two slides on the background for the formula business.
Yes, it looks like Kristin has a comment.
I added a question on the first slide. I was looking at Linda's comments. Can a. Can a formula business bylaw only apply to a business district? I'm assuming that's only the case. And the only reason I ask is because Linda, your comment says, you know, we're adding it to our list of areas in the formula business by law. We only have them in business districts, so just in case anybody asks you. Might just have been me.
I. You couldn't have a formula, you could have a formula business bylaw applied to any property that was own business or commercial.
All right, no, that's, that's enough. Thank you. Sorry. Go back.
No, that's okay. Background. For this slide, Linda, I did have to break it in two because the format doesn't allow you to go a font less than, I think it's 20 point. So I took this slide and just broke it into two slides. If that's okay.
Sure. Maybe we can tighten it up.
Yeah, because I copy a slide and cut and paste, the narrative at the bottom is the same, so. shorten that for each slide. And then Thursday or Friday, I'll, I'll be into work and I'll make the map. That you can just show the boundary of the depot. And the 12 existing formula businesses. And this, and this is the last slide. Why set a limit of 14?
I had a question, more question should the issue arise? And that is, since I'm talking about the history in 2011 and then 2019, subsequent to the establishment of the formula business limitations, have we had any consequence of that? Have any? Has any business wanted to move into those districts that have not been permitted? Or has there been any, any action or any proposals or anything of consequence? That if someone asks, well, how many businesses have you, you know, you, the plan, has the planning board turned down? Or, you know, have there been any?
I'm not, I'm not, yeah, I'm not aware of any businesses being turned down, no. So West Concord and West Concord Village aren't at their max. Concord Center is at the max. So if another formula business comes in, then that's, that, that will be the first time. I think there's going to be a conversation on how they make themselves not a formula business either. You know, changing, you know, their branding and signage and, you know, I'm not sure. It really will depend on what type of business wants to come in, but. Okay, West Concord's not at their max yet. But I can, I, I will find that out just so that you have that. That answer. I just don't know off the top of my head what number West Concord's at. I want to say. I want to say seven. But I'll find out. Thank you.
So is there any more on this one to go over? I think that was, you went through the last slide, right?
That was it. With any other questions or information you need from me?
Are there any other for them, for the March hearing that we would even be able to go over tonight?
Well, at this point, Burton, Kristen, and Linda will just make the modifications to their presentation and, you know, their speaker notes. It will not be coming back to the board.
Okay.
I'm just making sure if anybody who's not presenting would like, has changed their mind and would like to present the one that I'm doing about the. Something so exciting, I already forgot. Oh, about the.
Additional dwelling unit.
Additional dwelling units. I want to just make sure anybody has an opportunity to do that going once, going twice. All right, I guess other people want to wait till next year to do it. That's fine.
All right, so I think, can we move on to? The throw business, I always say that the wrong way, the throw depot business district warrant article and the FAQ updates.
So I got what everybody received was the suggested edits that Kristen did. And then Nathan, I think you sent one yesterday. So I can bring that up and maybe you and Kristen can kind of go through your edits and any, any outstanding questions before this gets finalized. Because we'll be making probably, I don't know, 100 copies. So the public hearing will be a hybrid. Hybrid meeting, so.
So, so we'll be in person if we can be?
Yes.
Is it at Harvey Wheeler? I didn't even read ahead yet.
No, it's at the hearing room at the townhouse.
Okay, those acoustics are so poor. But I guess it's good that we'll be televised, that makes it better microphone.
Yes. So I don't know how you want me just to scroll down, Kristen and Nathan, and you guys can take turns on your edits or if anybody has questions.
Yeah, my edits are all in the last, the last section, so.
Some of mine in the beginning were just kind of smaller ones to add a little bit more clarification or detail. For example, when we talk about use, I just wanted people to be referred to where they could find a table of uses. My more substantial comments were probably in the. In the section about traffic, maybe. See what you come to next. I, I did add, yeah, I did add that, because I think it's important that the focus is on the kind of the why and that this is supporting the long range goals. And so where we had economic vitality and. You know, and more diverse housing, you know, sustainability is a big theme that we believe or is being addressed through this more walkable and planned area as well. So, so that's why I kind of mentioned it there and then I also kind of mentioned it as, as, as in some of the elements here. This is, I feel like just kind of, I, I moved some words around, but also referred people to the guidelines on the, on the webpage there so that, you know, folks know that the draft actually exists.
Kristen, I didn't, what? What additional resident input are you referring to? For the. The guidelines, like hasn't, haven't we gone through that process of gathering input and then?
Yeah, my, my understanding is that the design guidelines are not finalized as, even if this warrant article is voted yes. So we've got a draft and what we would do in the future is say, okay, now let's finalize the design guidelines and there's, so there should be more public input before those are finalized.
Adoption of the design guidelines requires a notice public hearing. So there will be another opportunity for public input. And then I don't think, I don't think either one of you made any changes to the table. And then Kristen, this is, you had added the question, why is the boundary? And this is the explanation that was in the warrant. And then.
Elizabeth, why, I, I don't, I don't, why are we doing that? Like, it doesn't, it's, it doesn't really say what. I think it's just the advantage to the town is.
Do you mean to add more to this? So in addition to aligning the commercial boundary with the property line?
Why is, why is that an advantage to the town?
So if you don't amend the boundary line, then the whole vision as far as how that property could get developed can't happen. You, you wouldn't be able to have a building in the front that, you know, goes alongside a very road.
Because there wouldn't be enough.
So you, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't. Correct.
So that facilitates additional development? It facilitates additional development?
It facilitates the purpose of this warrant article, which is having the zoning that. You know, meets what envision Concord planned and meets the design, the draft design guidelines. Otherwise, you know, you can't, you can't develop the property in the manner that this zoning bylaw allows.
And just to be clear, we're talking about a parcel that is already developed as a parking lot, basically.
Correct, but this facilitates putting a building there.
Correct, which is what was part of the whole conversation was having the building along the street and not parking.
Okay, so should we just say that here?
Sure. I'll, I'll do this.
Also, just to go, just to go back, I didn't, I can't, didn't unmute myself in time, but this is a small comment, but up towards the front, it says the Concord has recently completed the long range planning, but I think it was adopted in 2018, which is four years ago now. Do you guys care? I mean, I don't, I just, I'm not sure if it's recent at this point, but.
Well, I mean, it is the most recent long range plan. But I'm, I'm fine with removing the word recently.
I think it says it has recently completed.
Okay.
I think it's further up top.
Do you remember? Further. Okay.
Yep. All right, Concord recently completed. Just, yeah, maybe in 2018 Concord completed or whatever. Yeah, but. Time goes by so fast. It's hard to believe it's not for you. It was recently, recently, but maybe not anymore.
And then. This is the section that Linda had provided. And then Kristen. Had her edits. So I originally had it highlighted in the copy I sent out just so people could see where that change was. So I don't know if this makes it easier to read.
And Linda, thanks for fixing that up. I just added some things to kind of distinguish between parking requirements and, and parking and kind of the terms adequate parking and, you know, more parking than needed. As, just to kind of clarify some of that throughout. And what we were trying to convey in this section basically is that. We, we're, we're trying to get just the right amount of parking and not too much and that the actual amount of parking, like parking spaces and, and area is going to depend on what happens in that, in that area, what, what use is happening.
And I don't think. Either one of you had any substantive comments until we got to. Traffic. So I don't know how.
Yeah, I, so. It's weird. I don't see, doesn't show my, it shows my edit, just doesn't show my name attached to them. But anyway, or there, there. Yeah, so this whole section, I sort of felt like we could tighten it up by really just keeping the first paragraph. And I added the, you know, the reference to site plan review up into that paragraph. I feel like the, the remainder of it is just saying more than we really need to say for it. Because we can't really say anything definitively about, about traffic at this point. And I think we basically, we effectively say that in the first paragraph. And yeah, I just don't know that we need to go further, further beyond that.
Um, I, I, I guess the concern that I, I've been hearing is that if we increase development in that area, if there are more people who reside in that area, if there are more commercial businesses in that area, we're going to have increased traffic and that was a concern to people. And. And yes, we, as part of state plan review, there would be some sort of traffic study that talked about the number of trips generated by that use. But I, I, I think that there's something to be said to address kind of the fact that it's not Concord residents kind of. It's not Concord residents that are in that area kind of creating the traffic. It's the people that are coming through there from other towns, at least according to that traffic study that was done, which was like now 2013. And so. You know, I, I guess I would think that making this a more walkable area, it would be more useful for Concord residents, but it wouldn't necessarily increase the traffic that is already coming through from, you know, non Concord residents. But I definitely want to hear what other people say because to your point, Nathan, I think having. Not trying to make things muddier than necessary is important. So I, I do agree with trying to kind of stick to the, to the facts as we know them and be able to help people to understand things as clearly as possible.
Does anybody else want to comment? Well, maybe while other people are thinking about it, I'll just, I'll, I'll add to what I was saying is, I, I don't disagree with, with any of the things you were just saying, Kristen. It's just, I know that every time this topic comes up, whether it's for this or for another development or, or anything. You know, we, we do talk about how, I, I think we've, we've mentioned that traffic study in the past about, you know, you know, basically passing through traffic. And, you know, a lot of people are just like, well, they kind of brush that off. They say that, yes, that's true, but this is still going to add more. And then I think further down, you know, there's the sort of reference to a general hypothetical that you could put together and. You know, we've had meetings where people sort of do that on their own and then they come to their own conclusions and it's not necessarily helpful. I, I mean, the reality is because we don't know what could be, you know, redeveloped in that space, even if this doesn't, this warrant article doesn't pass. redeveloped in that space, even if this doesn't, this warrant article doesn't pass. It's just really hard to say effectively one way or the other. You know, what the traffic impact would be. And I, I think it's fair to be upfront and just say, look, we don't have an answer to that now. We won't have an answer to that until there is a solidified plan and a, and a traffic study that goes along with it. And, you know, sometimes it's okay to say we don't know. And that, you know, as part of the process, we will, it will be discovered, but at this point in time, you know, we don't know. Andrew, you look like.
I think anytime, anytime anyone references traffic, it, it, it's a black hole because it's something that is always getting worse regardless of anything anybody does. Traffic calming measures make it worse because it slows it down. Losing traffic calm measures make it worse because more cars can go through and it's more dangerous for children allegedly, you know, all of these, no matter what, no matter what side of the argument you try to sell, you've now ignored what someone else's peeve with the traffic is. And I, I tend to think the more in-depth you get, the more traps you set. In, because there's no, as Nathan says, even, even if they did a comprehensive traffic study in advance of this, 10% of the audience would read that and say they didn't consider it right. They didn't count the cars right. They have an agenda. You know what I mean? That, that, that there's this, this and, and, you know, as someone who's seen traffic escalate over the last couple of years, like I get it, there's, there's a real concern out there of what's happening with cars being rerouted around traffic using ways and Strawberry Hill Road was debating whether they were going to put in speed bumps because of people trying to get around. One of the traffic apps was sending people off of Route Two way back in Acton up Pope Road, trying to get people around all that. Try, I mean, it's like, there, there's all this nutty traffic patterns being created that no one can predict. And it, it, it's kind of you, the way I look at it is you can say how much traffic impact will there be? I, I think that we don't know, but we're trying to, you know, do our best here is kind of the best answer. Hypotheticals are dangerous because they create assumptions, I think. You know, assume this, assume this, assume this, and then everything's great. The moment one person doesn't believe the assumption, you've now spent a whole paragraph of credibility. You know, that's just where I, I look at it, but that said, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I think, I think very interested people will read this very closely and I think moderately interested people will say, oh, is there going to be traffic? Yes, no, maybe, and kind of just move on. So I, I just, I, there's sort of good arguments both ways as far as I can see.
I agree with removing the hypothetical. I think that's what I said in my comment.
Linda, Kate?
Yeah, I think the hypothetical gets, gets you into a, you know, my hypothetical better than your hypothetical. I don't know. You know, I so I think that's fine to, to eliminate. I, I do think it's good to make a, a point that there's all ready a fair amount of traffic. There's very there's not much traffic calming. I mean, there is some at the, the main intersection, but there certainly is. I, I think there's opportunity to improve what, what's going on in the Crosby's area. So I, I perhaps, and, and then I guess in the first sentence, traffic appears to be a concern, I think. It certainly is a concern of many residents. So I, I, I would take out the word appears, you know, traffic is a concern. Or, you know, the potential for increased traffic is a concern. And I, you know, I think all we can be is, is cognizant of that. And try and balance it with improvements for walkability, bikeability and traffic calming.
Okay, so at this point, Kate, unless you have a different argument, removing the hypothetical.
Oh, I, I, I think, I think it just depends on like sort of how sophisticated your audience is, which I think a lot of people in Concord are sophisticated. I think that's a powerful art, like, it's a good argument, but yeah, I don't know. Maybe the FAQ is getting a little bit long. So I don't know. I, I, I think it's, I think it's actually, I think it's a good argument. And I, I think a lot of people are like craving some hard numbers. Because it's also unknown. So I think this is one way to try to ground it down into something, but like, I mean, I'm not, I mean, like, bring it down to earth a little bit. So. I guess the majority thinks it's a good idea to get rid of it, that we should do.
I guess one other thing.
I can tell you. Sorry, I can tell you the, the FAQ is too long. And have not have not sent it to the moderator yet. Because what I hope is that this document gets put into the, the meeting materials handout for a town meeting. You know, if, if it's too long, then, you know, well, you know, we used to print the 600 copies of all the handouts in previous town meetings. So I'm not concerned with the, the length of the handout because this is your only handout other than after the public hearing, you need to go through and make your recommendation to town meeting on the, I think the three, four, six articles that will be at the public hearing on whether what is it? The, oh. Affirmative action or whether to not move the article. So those that happens after your public hearing, you make that vote. And each one of those votes goes into, you know, it's a one-page document that has that vote. And that written recommendation is required under state law for town meeting. So for some town meetings, the board had six different articles and you had six different handouts. So I'm not, I'm not worried about making copies of a seven-page handout. Taking out one paragraph will make a difference.
Yeah, but to your point, trying to just keep to kind of the most relevant things so that we don't lose everybody. You know, Nathan, that was your original point and I think that's a good one.
Yeah. From. I was just gonna say for this one in particular, I, I, I'm mindful of what Andrew mentioned, which is that you sort of set up yourself for some, some traps in that what I think we've said this before is just that traffic itself isn't really tied or connected to this, you know, this warrant article because you could have redevelopment as is, that would potentially drive up traffic. You know, much more than, than a hypothetical development that we've been talking about. Uh, you know, in all the meetings we've had before. And so I I, I worry about spending too, you know, too much real estate or time on traffic when you know, I think we should focus on it. It's not directly tied to what's being proposed in, in this in this warrant article.
And, and one thing that's important to remember, like just even to think about in the discussion we've had, we're, we're using terms that aren't necessarily our expertise. I think Linda said traffic calming, which was a word I was trying to avoid because that's actually slowing cars down. That's, that's where you have these roads that are too wide, so people can move too fast. And we're talking about traffic reduction or, or the impact on, on car buildup, which is actually good for, you know, traffic calming. So it's just, it's a, it, it's this, it's a very traffic patterns in cities and towns are very complicated. The proposition anyway. There, there's arguments that you should make roads smaller and tighter and cut sightlines because it slows people down. You know, if you're trying to reduce, you know, speed, which is something that came up in the public forum. So the, the deeper I think we get into, into fleshing this out, the more likely we are to run into someone who really knows what they're talking about. And, and it's not that we're trying to prove anyone wrong or, or have the right opinion, but it's that we, it's just traps for the unwary. That's, that's the way I look at it.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go with the consensus.
There you go.
And that's, that's it.
Can I, I have a comment on the cross, the commuter rail parking. At some point, we had the number of, we put the 55 parking spaces in the context of the total amount of parking. And it was 40%, I think. And I'm not sure when that came out, but I, I think that is useful to have in there. To get, to give people an idea of how much of the total parking that constituted. Uh, may, maybe it came out, I'm not sure why it came out. Did someone think it wasn't right or did someone think it was incorrect?
Does it right there? 55.
I, I didn't actually remember seeing the 40%, so I don't remember why it came out necessarily.
So I'm sorry. Kate, were you saying that you think there should be something else in there other than the, the, you know, mentioning of the 55 spaces?
Yeah, I was saying that it should say 55 spaces constitutes 40% of the available commuter parking at the Throw Depot. Which was in a previous draft.
Is it, I got confused, is it 55 spaces or 56?
Yeah, I think it's 56, isn't it?
Well, it says 56.
Uh, one space got taken away for a island rain garden.
Fair enough.
Okay.
I think it's still 40%, whether it's 55 or 56.
So that, is that 40% of the, the, the total, like, including people parking up the sides and all that, or is that 45, 40% of that lot is commuter parking? I, I don't remember ever seeing the 40%, so I'm just, I'm just curious.
It's 40% of like the spaces that exist for commuters to park in if they want to park and go to and get on the train and go somewhere. Dedicated for that purpose. Like not parking at a meter, for example, which doesn't.
So where are the other 70? That's, that's just where my mind's going, trying to figure it out.
There, there's some at the, the Row Depot, there's some off, I think it's Church Street. There, there's space all over the place, but I don't, I don't know exactly. I think in, we do have I don't know how recent the study is.
I mean, if we can confirm that it's whatever percentage it is, I, I'm not opposed to having that in there. Even if it was in there before, putting it back in or, or confirming and putting in whatever it actually is.
Okay, I can do that.
I should have mentioned this earlier, but if you're watching or listening and you want to comment at the end of, of the board's uh, conversation about this, please use the raised hand function. Or if you're on a phone, I think it's a star nine, is that what it is?
Yes.
And Sue, I do your hand, your, your hand up. So we'll, we'll get to you in just a minute. All right. Are there any other comments from the board? On the FAQs? All right, if there are not, then let's get some public comment. Sue, again, I see your hand up, so please feel free to unmute.
Sue Felsham, 19 Sunnyside Lane, I have a really exciting comment. At the beginning of your traffic section, the word traffic is in double quotes. I would like to suggest that you remove the double quotes. I understand what you're getting at, but some people might take that to mean, well, you're saying quote, traffic unquote. So you must think that I don't know what traffic is and I'm insulted and just save some trouble. Thanks, that's my comment. Oh, and commuter rail parking, there's a surprising amount of commuter rail parking in this weird no man's land down past Cottage Street, but it, it's not important.
Cottage, that's right.
That's, and that's included. And the 40% number includes that, Sue. Those are actually designated spaces that have been counted by the town.
Sure.
Thank you, Sue. Any other public comments on the Throw Depot business FAQs? Not seeing any hands up. I see the next thing we already have is draft meeting minutes for, for last week. Were we not, I thought we were gonna do the the site plan rules and regs discussion was going to be continued to tonight. Are we not doing that? But I don't think we should anyway if Burton is not here, because I know.
No, I, I am because Kate and, I think it was Kate and Haley weren't at the February 8th meeting. And then the board went through and had all the topics, it got correct. Nancy may have to correct me if I'm wrong. I thought the discussion got continued out to March 22nd so that everybody could do their homework and gather their, you know, their points and examples and send them to me that I could start beginning to to put everything together in a draft document. That's what I remember.
Did I get assigned a topic?
All of them.
Not all of them?
Just gave them all to me.
I am so honored.
There's, I'll send you an email. I'll try and do it before I, I leave tomorrow.
Don't worry if you don't get to. I'm gonna put a note on my calendar to email you when I get back from February break. That's okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
So I do know landscaping and lighting were two that nobody took. So I don't know if you're interested in either one of those.
Oh, I'd like to do.
We can talk after.
I thought I was.
Those sound great to me.
But I guess not. What did I sign up for?
Did you think you did, Andrew?
I thought I did, but.
Both are. Which one, Andrew?
Oh, I don't care. I, I just.
No, which one did you think that you signed up for?
For landscaping, but I.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Maybe it was plantings or something. I don't, I don't know, something related to that.
Okay.
And do we have?
So that's why it's not on the agenda.
Well, that's good. And here I thought it was gonna be, so I was like doing, I was doing my homework and I sent you some stuff already. And we, I don't see them. We do not have the meeting minutes from last week, do we?
No, no, you don't.
I did, I would have been surprised if we did. That'd be a very quick turnaround for either you or Nancy.
Yes. Oh, I, I, I think Nancy did get them done. It's me being on vacation and I didn't, I didn't read them. So, so they will be on your March 22nd meeting. You, you do not have any other business on March 8th for the public hearing. Unless possibly if an ANR came in, that would be the only thing.
I think we've done that before at a hearing. We've had an A.
I think once.
Yeah. Um, okay. So we'll skip over the meeting minutes and any other liaison or town planner updates?
I do not have any other updates.
Kristin, I saw you raise your, your hand.
I just have like public comment, but it's not a liaison report. So I'll, I'll see if anybody else has that first.
Okay. Anybody else?
So, so since we have some good, consistent public listeners and participation on the call, I will begin my plug for green cards for people who are interested in serving on the planning board. My term and Burton's term and this year, I think probably at the end of May.
Yeah.
So I know there's some very active participants on this call. If you are considering being part of the board, please submit a green card. And, and tell your friends. So I just kind of start putting that plug in now so that we can generate some interest.
And on that note, Elizabeth, did you see my note about the ones that we have? Do we have an email address for them or I just call them out of the blue?
Um, no, I, I think it's on, on the ones I sent, but I will, I will check. And I do know that another one was submitted on the fifth. So yeah, I'll do that tomorrow.
I mean, yeah, don't, please don't take any additional time out of your vacation time.
Oh, yeah. No worries.
Uh, okay. No other liaison or other updates. We can move on to general public comment. If there is any. Uh, I see Carol. Carol, go ahead.
Um, sure. So I was just curious about.
Please state. We, we all know the name and address.
Sure, sure. Sorry. Carol Sloy, 61 Belknap Street, Concord. I was interested in the public hearing on the 8th. The, it's for the, the warrants going forward and what's the purpose of the public hearing them? Because I thought the warrants were already finalized and you can't change them. So I'm just trying to understand what's the, the purpose of that meeting.
Um, so chapter 48, the zoning act requires that any zoning bylaw or a general bylaw that's under the planning board's provision, there be a noticed public hearing at which presentations are made on each one of those warrant articles. And the planning board, after that public hearing, as required by state law, needs to make a recommendation to town meeting on whether to take affirmative action or no action. And once a warrant article is submitted, a warrant article can be modified on the floor of town meeting. You can't make something more prescriptive. You can make it less prescriptive. And it is up to the town moderator on whether a proposed amendment on the floor of town meeting is within the scope of the original warrant article. So somebody can't make a motion, a amendment on the floor of town meeting and insert something that nobody would have ever known was going to be inserted. So the town moderator is the one that makes that determination on whether an amendment on the floor of town meeting is within the scope of the article.
Okay, so it, it's a, it's a, go ahead. Okay. And so I'm just trying to, so I get it. So the, the hearing is required to, to go over, make the presentations of the warrants that you discussed tonight. And then it either gets recommended to go to town meeting or not to go to town meeting at the end of that public hearing. Is that correct?
Um. I wouldn't use the term to go to town meeting. Everything that's printed in the, in the warrant will be you know, on this, on the warrant for town meeting. It's, you know, state law requires the planning board to make a recommendation to town meeting on whether to take affirmative action on a particular warrant article or no action, which is means basically the warrant article is denied.
Okay, so let's just say hypothetically that 500 people show up and say we're not interested in one of the warrants and give a lot of reasons why they think it's a bad idea. Does that mean it gets a no or a yes in affirmative action or denied?
The planning board would have a discussion after the public hearing on and vote on how they want to make a recommendation to town meeting.
Okay, so it doesn't happen.
Regardless of how many people show up at the public hearing, the warrant article is on the warrant for town meeting. Town meeting will take an action.
Right, but I thought you said it's a hearing that you're giving the presentation and then you're gonna decide at the end of the hearing if you take an affirmative action or deny it. So to me, that means affirmative action, yes, it goes to town meeting, denied, no, is that?
I think, I think another way to think of it is that the, the planning board would basically be saying affirmative action, meaning that the planning board supports this warrant article going, you know, being passed in town meeting. And no action would mean that the support for it, for whatever reason it may be, I, I can't, I don't remember a time that that's happened. But that the planning board or any other board for that matter, no longer supports that and does, does not want to move it forward it within town meeting for it to pass. Would that be another way to think of it, Elizabeth?
Um, so the planning board is only making a recommendation to town meeting as required by state law. Now, meeting is the one that decides. Yes. The planning board's required to make a recommendation on all zoning bylaw warrant articles, whether they're sponsored by the planning board or a petition article or, or somebody else.
And just to be clear, Carol, if, if there were to ever be a warrant article that, that the planning board were to to recommend no action, it would still, there would still be a vote at town meeting and it would potentially still pass as is as printed. Barring any floor amendments or floor changes.
Right. So that's what I was trying to get at. So even if the whole town of Concord showed up and said, we do not want this particular warrant going forward at the hearing, it wouldn't matter. It's still going forward. The warrant is still going forward to town meeting, is what you just said.
Correct. The, the, the opportunity to vote on it, regardless of the planning board's recommendation, is at town meeting.
Right. No, I'm not saying vote. I'm just saying if you, if the whole town shows up and says, we're against this, we don't like it, you know, for all these valid reasons. At the end of your hearing, it doesn't matter what the town says, because even if you say no affirmative action, which will never happen, it's still going forward to town meeting to be voted on. So is that a correct statement?
No, because the public hearing is not the town. Town meeting is the town. The public hearing is where people can come, they can get information, they can ask questions about an article and get questions answered.
Yeah.
The public hearing is not the town. Town meeting is the town. So I don't know how else I can explain this.
I think what Carol just said is correct. She said it's, it's gonna be on the warrant regardless of what the vote is at that hearing by the planning board. I think that's correct, right? Sorry about. It's on the warrant.
The, it's on the warrant.
Yeah.
And the planning board is, well, after the public hearing, it usually does not happen at the public hearing. At the following meeting, the planning board discusses the warrant articles and the questions that they received and makes, votes their recommendation on those warrant articles.
So what is being decided is whether or not we recommend it. At this point, it's on the warrant.
It would be, it's, it's a, it's a vote of confidence is basically sort of what it is in the, in the warrant.
No, it, it's, it is just a recommendation. That's all it is. Whether the planning board supports it and tells town meeting to take affirmative action, or whether town meeting, the planning board doesn't support it and recommends that town meeting take no action. It is a recommendation. That is the, the, and the purpose for a public hearing, besides being a requirement of state law, is so that people can come and ask questions and get their questions answered. Because at, at town meeting, you have one minute and there's not, there's not a lot of time for everybody to ask questions. And that is one of the other purposes for the public hearing.
Okay, so it's more educational and getting their questions answered. It's not if they're against it and want to make the planning board aware of, you know, why they feel that way. That is not what the hearing's for, and that doesn't make any difference. If 500 people or 18,000 people show up and say, we don't want this, it doesn't matter because that input goes nowhere.
Um, it may, it may make a difference to the board and how they vote their recommendation. But it is not a vote of town meeting. It may make a difference for the planning board and their recommendation.
Right. But it, you know, if 18,000 people show up and say, we don't want it, and the planning board says, you know, maybe we shouldn't go forward with it, and you recommend no, it's just means the planning board said no, and we don't recommend it. And, but it still goes to town meeting, correct?
Correct. The warrant.
It just means the planning board doesn't support a town meeting. All right. So there's no way to stop the warrant from going to town meeting. It's going to town meeting, whatever happens between now and town meeting. The hearing is for educational purposes and get people's questions answered. And the planning board makes a affirmative or denies it. Or, you know, if you say, you know, we don't recommend it, it doesn't matter if you don't recommend it. It's still going to town meeting.
Um, yes, it is on the town meeting warrant for town meeting to deliberate and vote on.
Okay. Just wanted to understand the process and, you know, what, what the public hearing would entail. So thank you. That was informative.
Thank you, Carol. All right. Any other public, public comments? Not seeing any. I think we can was one of the earlier ones, wrap up this meeting. And Elizabeth, you can get back to enjoying your vacation time.
Thank you. So you're adjourning the meeting.
I'm adjourning the, the meeting of February 15th. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye.